I'd like to call the Board of Trustees regular meeting Monday, June 2nd, 2014 at 7:30 in order. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Adaptation of agenda. Any additions or deletions? I would like to add under number 20C, Building Department Personnel Request. Any other additions or deletions, please?
I'll make a motion to adopt the amended agenda with the one addition of 20C.
Support. Thank you. I don't know who had it first, but motion by trustee Churchy, supported by trustee Boyd. Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Public comments? Sir?
How you doing this evening? My name is Shawn Millmeyer and I'm a representative of Citizens for Better Macomb County. What brings us here tonight is I'm actually taking to the county itself is a new adaptive park program. I'm trying to go from each municipality and try to see if we can get different communities involved in cleaning up their local parks. And that's getting church groups, boys' guilds, schools to go out into their local parks and actually start cleaning them up, helping take some of that off of the city. So hopefully with our budgets being stressed as much as they are, it can help everybody out. The other, next step of that is hopefully eventually to start getting supporters to back different parks and actually get like flower beds, see what we can get into different parks to start making a difference in our communities. And that's what our group is doing and obviously we work on a lot of different green initiatives. We were one of the groups that actually helped fight against putting, having residents put landfill in. And as we've been trying to make a future for ourselves and help make a future for actually the entire county, you know, making a difference for everybody around. And I can put that in front of you as far as if there's any questions or anything I can do as far as there's anything, please let us know. And like I said, we want to try to push this forward to start making a difference in our communities.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure. And like I said, please reach out to us.
Thank you. Another public comment this time? Public comment? Approval of minutes 5:5, 5:7, 5:14, 5:21, 2014.
We had several workshop meetings and there are minutes for each of those. Nothing was decided at any of them at those meetings, so it's just putting it into record.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of 5:5, 5:7, 5:14, 5:21 of 2014 as printed. Support.
Motion by trustee Churchy, supported by treasurer Adenbacher. Other questions, discussions? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Sheriff's report. Everybody should have received a report shortly after the last meeting. Once again, they're still lagging behind as they get their system in place. So I'm sure we should get one probably within the next week or so. Fire department report. Chief?
Good evening, everyone. First thing on my agenda is to receive and file the monthly report unless somebody has a question. Run call by this back to what we would call average, 30-35 runs a month. Fire prior from back in January and February. So if there are no questions, request that be received and filed. My next item under Fire Department Report, I formulated a letter to the board dated May 28th. And that is a request for permission to hire a probationary firefighter. We received a application from Mr. Christopher Brown who resides on Placeroade in the township. And Mr. Brown has already completed firefighter one and two. He put himself through the Macomb Community College Fire Academy. And he also has just recently completed his EMT training with Baker College. And he's waiting to take his national registry. Background check is nearly complete. There's only one other thing and then I'll grab that Wednesday when I'm down at the college to get his transcripts for the fire academy. He has gone through the chief's interview as well as the interview with the command staff. It was the command staff's recommendation that I forwarded Mr. Brown's application for hire to this township board to request permission. At this time, I'll entertain any questions and Mr. Brown is here with us at this time. Chris?
How you doing? I'm Christopher Brown. Request for hire. Lennox Township Fire Department. I would love to serve the community, you know, and help out any way I possibly can.
Great, thank you, Mr. Brown.
Chris, are you in the area? Do you have a job?
I do construction on the side. It's a part-time job with my uncle.
So you're available during the day? A lot of our guys aren't?
Yes, sir. Very bad. Sorry.
Right, yeah.
Any questions for Mr. Brown?
I make a motion that we approve the hiring of Christopher Andrew Brown for the Fire Department.
Support.
Motion by clerk Keith, supported by treasurer Adenbacher. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Welcome, Christopher.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Next item that I have on the agenda, Sergeant Bruce, can you come up and give me a hand? Gary, can you come up and give me a hand, please? Also, people in the audience, our family and friends, for those of you who are not, tonight we have a formal awards ceremony. At this time, I'd like to call firefighter Tim Plackton to the podium and Assistant Chief Marty Hartway. Firefighter Plackton has completed his probationary period. He was approved for hire last year by the township board, I believe at the August board meeting. He has done all his, completed all of his probationary training. With completion of that, he is then awarded his badge to wear with him whenever he's in a, in his uniform here at the department. So at this time, we'll have Assistant Chief Hartway pin the badge on firefighter Tim Plackton. Congratulations. Thanks, Tim. This time, I'd like to call firefighters David Engel and Timothy Lanat II up, please. Lennox Township Fire Department proudly presents a certificate of recognition to firefighter David Engel for five years of dedicated service and commitment to the community and the Lennox Township Fire Department, presented the second day of June 2014, signed by supervisor Ron Trobley and Fire Chief Dennis Fuchet. Great job, Dave. Congratulations. The Lennox Township Fire Department proudly presents this certificate of recognition to firefighter Timothy Lanat II for five years of dedicated service and commitment to the community and the Lennox Township Fire Department, presented the second day of June 2014, signed by supervisor Ron Trobley and Fire Chief Dennis Fuchet. Congratulations, Tim, on a great five years. This time, I'd like to call up Sergeant Brian Kloski and Sergeant Ronald Goss. In recognition of Sergeant Brian Kloski for 15 years of outstanding service to the Lennox Township Fire Department, I, as Fire Chief Dennis Fuchet, proudly recognize Brian and award him this plaque. In addition to this plaque, he'll be awarded three stars to wear on his dress uniform. Congratulations, Brian. In recognition of Sergeant Ron Goss for 15 years of outstanding service to the Lennox Township Fire Department, I, Chief Fuchet, proudly present this plaque to Ron Goss. Congratulations, Ron, on a great 15 years. This time, I'd like to give out the Years of Service award. First, I'd just like to say how proud I am to be associated with these guys. These are, these are Lennox Township men here. I don't know how else to put it. This is the heart and soul of our community. What great guys, what a commitment they give our community. I'm going to start with Kim, Marty, and Denny. Please step forward if you would. In December of 1988, East Street Men submitted applications to become members of soon-to-be-formed Lennox Township Fire Department. On February 5th, 1989, they were officially hired as original members of the department. During those winter and spring months of 1989, they met and they trained with other new members of the department and were present on the first day of operation, July 1st, 1989. East Street Men are the only remaining members from that original group. With the leadership East Street Men developed over the past quarter of a century, the Lennox Township Fire Department is recognized as one of the most professional, highly-trained organizations in Macomb County. On behalf of Lennox Township Board of Trustees and the residents of Lennox Township, I wish to congratulate each one of you on 25 years of service to Lennox Township Fire Department. Thank you very much, Sean. 25 years. Heck of an accomplishment. Thank you, gentlemen. Second, I'd like to hand out some lifesaving awards. I would like to ask Captain Cam Trobley, Sergeant Brian Kloski, firefighter John Kiernan, and firefighter Helmut Thielmann to step forward. On December 18th at 8:45 PM, the Lennox Township Fire Department and Richmond Lennox EMS were dispatched to a residence on call for a person with a breathing problem. Upon arrival, both departments personnel found a 59-year-old female with extreme difficulty breathing. Moments after arrival, the patient went into full cardiac arrest with no vital signs present. Fire department personnel immediately began adult CPR on the patient while EMS personnel began administering advanced medical life support functions. The patient was stabilized, transferred to the ambulance, and subsequently transported to the hospital. Due to the quick professional actions of all members present from both the EMS and the Fire Department, this patient survived this possible fatal medical incident and was left at the hospital breathing on her own. On behalf of Lennox Township Board of Trustees, I'd like to congratulate each of you on your exceptional performance and award you these lifesaving awards. Thank you once again, gentlemen. I have one more set of lifesaving awards. I'd like to ask firefighter John Kiernan, Assistant Chief Marty Hartway, and Fire Chief Denny Fuchet to step forward. On March 19th, 2014, at 1:04 PM, the Lennox Township Fire Department, Richmond Lennox EMS, were dispatched to a resident on a call for a person with chest pain. Firefighter Kiernan responded directly to the scene from his residence and arrived simultaneously with EMS crew. Upon making entry into the home, the patient was found laying on the living room floor in full cardiac arrest with no vital signs present. Firefighter Kiernan immediately began administering CPR while the medics began preparing all advanced life support equipment. Assistant Chief Hartway and Chief Fuchet arrived moments later and began assisting with CPR and assisting with administering advanced life support measures. The patient was stabilized, transferred to the ambulance, and subsequently transported to the hospital with Assistant Chief Hartway traveling with EMS crew. Due to the quick professional actions of all members present from both EMS and the Fire Department, the patient survived this possible fatal medical incident and was left at the hospital breathing on his own. On behalf of Lennox Township Board of Trustees, I'd like to congratulate each of you on your exceptional performance and award you these lifesaving awards. I'd like to turn it back over to the chief now. I'd just like to ask for one big round of applause once again for all our gentlemen.
I'll make this real short. On behalf of the entire organization, Fire Department always receives 100% support from the township board and from our residents. For our families, we're not home very often. And you can understand why. This is in our blood. And this is something that I've done about half of my adult life. And it's still the greatest job in the world. And I work with the greatest group of people in the world. And our residents can be very proud of that. So I want to thank the board for allowing us to hold this awards ceremony tonight. And that concludes the Fire Department report. Thank you very much.
Len, can I comment to the Fire Department people there?
Sheriff, if you'd like to.
Sure. Why not?
If you happen to let you do that.
Mickey Ludeman from Frost Road. And I would just like to say a big thank you to all of you gentlemen. They do an awesome job. I had to have them many, many times at my house when Carl was very, very ill and sometimes not in a very good mood when they came in. But they were patient. They were awesome. And believe it or not, those of you that know me, sometimes in an emergency, you get really confused. And one gentleman, there he is, right there, the big guy. I don't even remember his name, but I do remember that. And he came over and when they had to fill out all the paperwork and everything, he just took his time. He told me, calm down, just give them all my stuff. And he filled all the paperwork for me. Those of you that have never, ever attended the stakeout that these gentlemen put on every year, you're missing one heck of a good time. Everybody is friendly. They're nice. It's local. And I cannot commend these men enough for everything that they do. Great job, guys.
Thank you very much. Anyone that like, I believe you're going to do pictures on the hallway, too?
Yes, sir.
Give you guys a minute to go ahead. Kim, if you'd like, I can put you at the end. Go on, I'll do him so he can get out of here real quick. I want to switch, switch over. EMS report, do you have anything, Mr. White?
No, I sent you everything that I had to receive.
Okay, thank you, sir. DBW report, so you can get out of there.
Good evening, thank you. Everybody should have received a copy of this month's public works report. And I say, receive and file. More than happy to answer any questions anybody may have.
Questions at this time? Cut it loose? Go ahead, sir. Thank you much.
Thank you very much.
Code enforcement report.
Liquor control inspection forms have been submitted to the court's office.
Thank you. Assessing Department report. Any questions at this time? Just so the community knows, there should have been a notice given, but they are out reassessing their 20% right now. So you should see identifiable vehicle with Lennox Township on it. And anybody out on the property should have proper identification identifying them as Lennox Township Assessing Department. Engineers report. Mr. Safe?
I've received the files, sir.
Thank you, sir. Library report. Any questions? Yeah. I'll just read the front page. Just to let everybody know, beginning Saturday, May 31st, and September 6th, the library will serve summer hours and will be closed on Saturdays. The activities they have, get ready for summer reading. This year's theme is Miss Bloom Read. It will focus on science. On Thursday, June 12th, the library will kick off this year's programs with an ice cream social. Summer reading programs for children include Christmas in June with Santa Claus, learn about sound waves, and learn about fireworks. Adult summer reading programs include a book craft and cooking demonstration with Chef Jod, who includes summer reading with a hoopathon and bomb-to-bomb sale sponsored by the Friends of the Library. Any questions? Senior Center report.
I assume that when she asked for our opinion on something, she's not really asking us to make a decision. She just wants to hear what we all have to say.
Correct, correct. Any questions at this time?
I'll talk to her about it. I'm good with what she's proposing. We need to let the residents know that in their lovely tax bill that they get in July, Luanne has asked if she could put a flyer in and save a little postage doing that. And it will kind of give you an update on what's going on and what she's got planned for the senior center. And I told her one extra piece of paper and that would be fine. She's going to get it to me and you'll get it in your tax bill.
Thank you. Supervisors report. Just wanted to make sure everybody on the, on the board got a copy of Been an Employee, Retired Today. So everybody should have got a copy of that. And that's where the new business comes in, which I'll explain to you at that time. But would like to thank Carol Evans for many years of her service. And I know she will be missed by all. And I wish her very well in the next chapter of her life. Treasurers report. Make a motion to approve the treasurer's report as presented. Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by trustee Churchy. Other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Orders and bills?
The total is $205,710.54.
Make a motion to approve the orders and bills of about $205,710.54.
Support.
Thank you. Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by trustee Churchy. Other questions or discussion? Deputy Clerk Brokaw, please.
Churchy? Aye. Boyd?
Aye.
Cocker?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Trump?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Trustees report. Trustee Churchy, please.
Just want to announce that on the planning commission level, we're just working on revamping a few ordinances, kind of fine-tuning them and bringing them up to date with things that are going on this day and age. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Boyd?
I attended the NEMC meeting last week. They are looking for focused programs among June. And what I assume they mean by that is anything Fire Department, any activities that are going on, they're just looking for programming. The board itself, we, right now, we're working on the yearly evaluation of the cable coordinator and the policy manual, updating, going over the policy manual. And we just completed at this last meeting, the bylaw policy review. And again, I mentioned this at the last meeting, NEMC would like to start filming the planning commission meetings and the ZBA. And we don't have a whole lot of them, but like they pointed out, if we have them here for the planning commission meetings, it doesn't cost us anything. It's the same as if they had them here for this meeting, they supply the person to come in and film it, and then it gets on there. So I really would like us to consider that and possibly have them start. I know there's, right now, there's probably not a lot going on, but even the little things, if it's a 20-minute meeting, they'll put it on the air.
I think that's a great idea.
And if the board would like it, I can talk to them to start arranging that.
If you want to know about it. See all our meetings televised especially.
Well, Karen, why don't you take that back to the planning commission and give us their opinion on it before we actually have somebody coming out on it?
That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Clerk's report.
The clerk's report is we are carrying up for the governor's election in August. It seems like we just finished one, which would be good. And starting again. The state came out and installed the computer that we received via the grant through the state, and that's up and running. Rose Cellar Florist is doing the downtown community event on Saturday, August 9th, 2014. This is the fifth year, from noon until 9:00 PM. And she is looking for earths and crab thunders. So if anyone's interested, contact Rose Cellar Florist. That's all I have.
Jody, what was the date again for the Rose Cellar?
August 9th.
Thank you. Motion to receive and file on the courts. Motion by trustee Boyd, supported by trustee Churchy. Other questions, discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Unfinished business, employee healthcare coverage. Mike, if you would, in case somebody has a question.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it. Thank you, sir, appreciate you coming out again.
Yes, my name's Mike Miller, insurance agent.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Miller?
Now, I had already asked the one question, and Michael came back with that today. With the HSA account, that was one of the policies that we were looking at. If we went into this now, we would have to pay it now, plus then again in January.
Right, I did get that news this morning. So, you know, a recommendation would be to actually get that HRA you have right now that's not being administered, properly administered, and then wait till your March 1st renewal, because you are on the 15th of the year or of the month right now, which I don't have any groups that have ever been on the 15th. I'm not sure why you can put on the 15th, but it will be moved next year to the first of the month. So you have a proper monthly bill where you can get that extra 15-day lag. And at that time, we will look at other plans and then see the savings. And at that time, if you were to fund it, you know, it'd be about nine months instead of the six, and then you can reevaluate everything at that point.
Just to verify, I talked to you a little bit ago, and the $750, we may have to pay the third-party administrator. But you'll be able to look in, and you were saying you might be able to find a way for them to pay for it, if you want to touch on that a little bit, just so the board's aware of it.
Absolutely, we would have done a group-wide change halfway through. That's what we're looking at with this HSA plan. I believe that there is a group-wide change that can be done for an administrator to do it with no cost. So if we can do the group-wide change and substitute for benefits to get this third-party administrator. Because when you set up the HRA at first, La Crosse has a health activities call, and they do it no charge. But since it was never set up by the previous agent, at this point, you would either have to make a group-wide change or have to hire a third party. But I believe I can get that at no cost when I go back and discuss with La Crosse issue.
So does this mean we would be staying the same plan we have until next March? So we're not switching over to ask the HSA, we would stay with what we have?
It wouldn't be physically responsible to change it to the HSA one at this point in time, because we'd have to pay that out twice for a one-year period. So if that's what we ended up doing, though, I would want you to sharpen your pencil between now and, let's say, December, and come back with anything that is like that HSA.
Right.
In different scenarios. Totally employee-funded, employee-funded, employer-funded splits.
Yeah, every, before every renewal, I usually come off the group-wide ninety days in advance, and sit down, and we have meetings upon meetings of what plans they would like available, what they would like to see, and then at that renewal date, approximately six days before we make that decision, you can go ahead and make that change.
And that's, I mean, that's what I would like to see, so that this time in November, you know, November 1st, we know what we're gonna do when the policy goes. Because usually it's January, February, and we're scrambling.
Right.
You know, not having time to ask questions. This time, I want to be able to do that in early. That's my opinion.
Yeah, but our next action would be definitely to get this HRA set up, because there could be penalties for not having it set up properly, but, you know, as of right now, so I'm gonna get on top of that right away.
Ron, did you want to explain to the audience what we're doing with the insurance? Because I know there's always been concerns about the cost and everything.
Well, yeah.
What we've been through, what we're trying to.
We'll give everybody a summary, we basically brought in Mr. Miller. We went out for bid, myself and Jeanette, and we actually went down to the county, had a workshop on, and we pulled every available healthcare plan that was available to Lennox Township. And I believe, Jeanette, correct me if I'm wrong, there were sixty-some? I believe there were sixty-six or something of that nature. We got every summary page of that plan and tried to make heads or tails on them. And I can tell you this, the people that we were dealing with, they still didn't know. Mr. Miller was the first person that gave us solid information on what we were dealing with. He came out multiple times, it's the first advice and information that I've been able to trust. Our existing carrier we had told us we had to change our plan, which we did. Come to find out, we did not have to change our plan at that time. So we went through a lot of information and really didn't get anywhere, except spending more money. So Mr. Miller's come up with some great ideas for us with the plans that are offered, the Health Savings Plan, and he can give us just a quick summary on that, how if we don't use that, that money rolls over every year for the employee. Basically, what we're looking to do is cut our expenditures and still provide great benefits for our employees, so that when they need to use our benefit, their benefits, they can afford them. And that's, that's what we're faced with, is that we want to be able to provide health insurance that our employees can actually use and not get killed by their deductibles, that the deductibles are within reason of them paying. I think that's our board's objective in having these workshops. I don't know if you, anything else you'd like to add to that, Mr. Miller?
Well, what I'm doing for the Township is trying to find the most affordable plans for, you know, the most value and the benefits that I can get for the employees. And it's just been a little bit of a struggle with the previous company that we're working with, and kind of doing a little backpedaling, but I think we're on the right track here in getting both the board's approval and making the board and whoever's on the plan for the township happy with what they have with sticking in budget.
Exactly. I think we'll see significant savings and still being somewhat close to providing the same quality of insurance. Actually, that's our objective. So, and I can assure you, this board did not take that lightly. We've had many meetings, many discussions, going back and forth. Mr. Miller and his father out multiple times, and even got our other insurance company involved, too, that we've dealt with. So we're exhausting every resource we have, just to let everybody know.
Yeah, the main goal was first to save the township as much money as possible, because it's gone, it's gotten out of hand. And then we looked at the benefits, and like Ron said, the deductibles took, and also, the plan that we did finally come up with, this HSA program, saves the actual township money and the insured person money. So it took a lot, and I think everybody put a lot of work and time into it, including our agent, who has been very forthcoming and helpful in clearing things up. So we're still working on it, trying to cut costs.
Yeah, very pleased, Mike. I mean, I don't think we could have gotten better information. I think we all agree we're on the right path right now, and I think we're right where we need to be, and this will be sorted out shortly. With the Obamacare change, there's still a lot of people, it could change again tomorrow, shortly. So nothing's set in stone, and there's a lot of programs out there. And I think we will see another change probably over a year for a while here till we get this nailed down. But I'm sure you'll help us nail it, Mr. Churchy.
Yeah, absolutely, you'll be notified right when I have it.
Any other questions? So we're gonna continue with what we have at this time, and you're gonna set up the, the $750?
The HRA, we'll send that up for you guys.
I don't believe we need a motion for that, he's already authorized as our agent. So I don't believe we need to take any action against that, other than fulfill what we need to fulfill on it.
Absolutely.
And just for those that have been following along, Mickey, I know you've asked me several questions on it. This decision to stay with this one was kind of tough, but to go with the next most affordable plan would actually cost us a lot because it's mid-year with this HSA. That's the only, this program, you can only get it with the HSA. So ultimately, unfortunately, staying with the plan we have is really our only option right now. It's actually cheaper that way. But rest assured, when a new one comes around, we will find a way to save money, one way or another.
I believe that. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Miller? Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate it once again.
Absolutely.
Put us on the calendar for October.
So everybody's where now, we're all on the same page. He's gonna take the proper steps, that's certain, if you want. Thank you. Township building window cleaning request. Any supervisor?
Good evening. I've only received one other quote. I'm still waiting for a couple other companies to give back with me. One was out here about a week ago and looked over the building, had some very serious doubts about a couple of these windows and how he would do it safely for his employees. And the ones that are giving him the most difficulty are those really tall, small windows way up there. Because the roof on the outside is slanted, and there's nothing for them to secure themselves so they don't fall, those windows are extremely difficult to get to. The one gentleman that came out, which you all have a quote for, he seemed to think there were no problem, so he can get to every window in the building. I have two other companies that were supposed to come out last week and have not. One was from a company that we got a quote from in '08, right after we moved in here. And they still have their quote, and they still want to come out here and give us an updated one. But I haven't heard from them. So I don't know what you want to do, if you want to wait till our meeting in two weeks. Hopefully by then, we'll have some more.
Otherwise, we'd have to wait till August.
Yeah.
And I, you know, we're faced, these are not easy windows, this is the problem here. We have to have specialty equipment come in, we're on the flooring also here. I believe that man lift the last time, that could damage the floor if not handled properly. Just the design doesn't add to maintenance here.
Well, I'm looking at the price, and I'm wondering, these windows up top here, and I guess I never really looked around, I've almost wondered if that's a big part of the expense, and maybe we could skip those ones and cut some of the expense? I mean, I'm just looking, because I'm looking at the price of this, and it's, I can't say it really surprised me because of all these windows, but it's still quite expensive.
Yeah, one of the other problems over here, too, where they have to put plywood down and actually stand on top of that, all ladders, really nowhere.
Right, on the outside.
To get equipment in.
Yeah, to get the other section.
Even these over here, too, it's pretty tough to get anything in other than ladders.
He can reach all these windows along this side here, from the ground, with their poles. And the ones on the outside above the little, I don't know what you call it, opposite the rain garden, he can get to those, but really it needs power washing up there to clean up all the...
There's a lot of debris up there.
From cobwebs and stuff like that, before we do the windows, and that quote's not in here, and I don't know if he does that, so I have to find out. This one company that I'm waiting on a quote from does do power washing, too. So I have to talk to Mr. Collins.
I think we're faced with a situation once again where, just like the medical insurance, we've asked for bids, we can supply with the companies we've asked for bids. If they're not turning these in, we can't force them. So at one point, we have to make a decision based on the information we have.
This is a very unique building, and it's very difficult to get to some of these windows. The space between the rain garden and the wall here is only a few feet, and Cam will attest to how little area there is to put anything to get up high. It makes it very difficult, the slanted roofs, everything.
What I understand is windows have never been cleaned?
On the outside, up there.
Yeah.
Anything that they...
Not to my knowledge, Cam, have you ever known that would be cleaned?
None of the very top ones, no.
Well, it definitely needs to be done. I don't particularly care for the price, but I also know that, you know, Ian, the cleaning company, what she's proposing isn't good enough, being the windows have never been washed.
Now, is that something that you guys want to do right now, is just do the lower level and then get more quotes, and then at the August meeting? So this could be like for September, right before winter?
I think the best thing for the bucks is gonna be when we get them all done at once. As far as a package deal myself, and that way we have a date when they've all been done, and we can go from there. I think when you start piecing them out, I just don't think it accomplishes what we need to.
We waited this long. I say, you know, if you've got some that, if they're not, if they've been out here, and I know there was a gentleman out here, because he was outside my window looking in and checking things. If they haven't put a bid in, I say, I mean, they're not interested, or they just think it's too big a job, so...
That's possible, I can call up the companies if you want.
Well, I say that's, you know, those that you've contacted, try to get them to give us a bid, and wait till August. Does anybody have a problem with waiting till August?
Like you say, it's been this long, what's another two months?
I'm sure these quotes probably will be the same, if we wait that long. In the meantime, talk to Dean on the power washing issue, I would say. Because there's no sense in going up there cleaning if it's never been power washed.
Yeah, and you can't do the windows and then power wash, because it'll ruin everything, right? So...
And that's, and just in conversation, another thing is, is there some type of solution, such as Renex, that could be put on? Because there are so many windows. Do it once, and then, you know, maybe it would last longer than... So a lot of different questions that could be asked with this.
Exactly, I agree with you on that, and one of the suggestions would be, let's have Cam involved with Jeanette. He's done the maintenance on the majority of this building. Let him work with whoever's given bids to ask those questions, and then finalize them.
I'm sure there's some kind of solution out there for commercial buildings that will keep the windows, you know, do something with it that...
I'll check into that.
Make a motion that we table the building window cleaning request until the August meeting. Waiting for more requests. Waiting for more quotes.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Ann Bakker. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Township four man purchase. Thank you, Jeanette.
As we said last month, Centus have, we have a little problem with billing, and couldn't find a rug that they've been charging us for here for some time. And we asked Steve, our attorney, to get involved in it, and I did get your letter, Steve. In the meantime, the gentleman that's been out for three months was insistent that that rug was here, we couldn't find it anywhere, but it was over in the old building. Looked in where the sheriff's room was over there, and there was the rug. Been there for six years since we've been over here. They've been charging us for six years to clean that rug, and bringing in two rugs and charging us for three. The young man that's doing it now and has been here for three months, he did pick the rug up last week, he came in and picked it up. He's gonna check into, no problem getting for the three months that he's been doing this, they'll give us a refund on that. He's checking into what the lady in the past had been doing with it. They will work with us and give us any refund on that. Because to get out of the contract right now, it cost us about $680. We're tied into a contract until 2016, I think it is. So I'm gonna do as Steve suggested, I'm going to do a letter to them. At this point right now, I see no reason for us to start checking into prices on these mats until we get this problem resolved. And it sounds like they're trying to work with us, but I am going to do what Mr. Joppich has suggested and send a letter telling them of our concerns and see what they'll do for us. and send a letter telling them of our concerns and see what they'll do for us. And we'll go from there. So as of right now, I say let's forget about checking into new mats and just see what's gonna happen there.
Thank you. No action taken on this subject this time, correct?
No.
Thank you. Any questions for Jeanette? New business. Mr. Safe, 2014-2015 sanitary sewer rates.
Good evening. Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
I believe the board has received my letter of recommendation for the new sewer rates. This year, the county has adopted a new methodology and have a fixed rate rather than have a fixed portion and a variable portion. So we have adjusted our method of calculating the new rate and the steps are listed on the letter. If you would like me to go over. It's basically the rate passed from Combe County at a 10% as normal that we do every year for Lansing Township and establish our new rate.
Okay, so reading this, it's going to raise the average customers bill by about 70 cents a month?
70 cents a month, very minor increase.
Any questions?
I make a motion that we approve the suggestion by Sirmad to raise the rate from 88.20 to 88.90 per MCF for the sewer charges for the 2014-15 year.
Support. Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Trustee Boyd. Other questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Combe County Treasurer's Office Tax Tribunal Refund Agreement.
Okay, I think I gave you all a copy of the letter that I received dated May 9th from the Combe County Treasurer's Office, Ted Wabi's office, from a Mr. John Robbins. He's the financial officer there. Very briefly, what has happened in the past, anyone that goes to the board review and goes on to a Michigan tax tribunal, when they go to Lansing and they get a judgment from them, usually they go years back. So say anybody that has fought their taxes and got a rebate or refund, it's fine if I'm collecting taxes, I can take it out of overdoing my year. But say for the year 11, 12, and then 13, as we're settling, those monies have been dispersed. And in the past, what would happen is we'd have to refund and the resident would get like 11 different checks. One from me, one from the county, one from each of the schools. So county has decided to step in and they've got a new program. I guess they're going out and gonna borrow the money and they're going to take it over and collect it and send us one bill once a month for any refunds they've done in our township for past years. And we would send them the money. They would in turn put all the entities together and send that refund in one check to that homeowner. Makes a lot of sense. We've always had complaints from people saying, why am I getting checks from this one and that one? And they get a little bitty one from us. They think that we've made a mistake where I think this is a great deal. I've given each of the board members a copy of it, also Steve, letting him read it. I've had our assessor looking over to see if he thought there was anything, because they're asking me to sign a contract with them.
I think this makes complete sense. Very, it simplifies the process.
It should've been done a long time ago. This has always been the big thing that people will call and complain and say, what do you mean? That's all I'm getting for, you know. Anything that you saw on there, Steve, or did it look all right to you?
It did look okay to me. It is in the form of a letter agreement. It does indicate that the township, and we talked about this very briefly before the meeting, that it does refer to the township being required to pay the bill to the county treasurer within 30 days of when the bill is sent by the treasurer's office to the township. Obviously with mail and whatnot, that could cut down on the period of time and board meetings and so forth. My only suggestion in that regard is that not to hold it up this evening, but perhaps to make an inquiry of whether they can send it by electronic mail, email, as well as by regular mail so that it gives you an advance notice, just as an administrative matter.
Yeah, as our, the assessor, that's the only thing that he found on and that he thought might be a problem is that they will charge us an interest if they don't receive our portion of that money within 30 days. While we all know how the mail goes. Sometimes we get tax bills that we mailed in December. Just last week, we could get them back because we don't know where they've been. So that was his only question that bothered him. So I'm gonna do like Steve said and maybe see if they can electronically do it. Or that's the only thing that I saw in the agreement that I wasn't real happy with.
Or if I may, perhaps they'd be willing to go to 60 days, understanding that the council only has one meeting a month.
And that's what we do with the consent judgments for the tribunals. They allow 60 days to waive that. So maybe they will. Okay, I'll check into it. I just need board's approval to go on with it.
I make a motion that we approve going with county tax tribunal refund agreement.
Support. Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Trustee Boyd. Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Building department personnel request. Once again, I told you I would, in my surprise report, get to this. And this was done at the spur of the moment because of the way the resignation was handled. We just received that today. I think it was somewhere around 2 o'clock, Karen, this afternoon. And we had a meeting with the employee and that took some time. So it was probably 3:30 by the time that was all said and done. That's why this is coming to you at this point. Everyone knows we do not have a July meeting. And my concern is, we have a department with one person. If that person is sick or off, or we already had a situation where she had a commitment that she had to take care of. We don't have anybody in there. We already did the interviews for this job. At that time, we did save the applications and we have checked in with that person. It was my recommendation and Treasurer Ottenbacher's recommendation. This other person was clear cut, one of the people we wanted to hire at that time. There's been some new developments since that where one of our existing employees that wanted to go there would like to stay where they're at. So this would be first perfect timing right now with the BSNA training and the new building department administrator we have in place. This is the perfect time to do this and get this all going. As you guys see, our business is going up in that department now. She's changed the whole department. She's on the right path, I believe. And I really think this person would work well. And I believe in speaking with you, Karen, you thought so also. So not only my recommendation, but your recommendation. I don't wanna speak for you, but that was our consensus at the time.
Right. I was in on the meeting today with Mrs. Evans in that, in Ron's office. And it came as a surprise to both of us what she was doing. And of course, the rest of the board members did not have time to even know about it until I got here tonight. I'm not sure what the board's pleasure is right now, if we feel we need to jump into this or do we go back and look at some of the other... I hate to go through the process again. We've done it so much. It seems like lately here with interviews. But we just need, how does the board feel about it? Do we need time to think about it? Or do we, what do we do?
And I'd like to interject on that. Just one second, please. We did post it. We did do extensive interviews. I think we interviewed 10 maybe.
I think so, yeah.
To me, it was clear cut. I believe you said the same thing at that time. And Jeanette, I believe, I don't know if she's in here. The same thing also. The three of us were all on the same page. To go back and go through it again, we're looking at probably another month to accomplish that. Like you said, our meeting is in August. We still, if we do hire somebody, they're in our 90-day period. We can get rid of them during that time if it's something that the board doesn't see as working. I think this is a very safe move. I think it accomplishes what we need to accomplish. We don't have to spend any more money or time on it. And it's done.
Well, she should be working under you. It's building department.
Under the building department.
If you're comfortable with it.
It would be, you know, I don't even have a question that it's 100% my recommendation. That's how clear cut it was in the interview process.
Does she have, I'm seeing QuickBooks, fast-paced atmosphere? I mean, it looks good for building department. Was she interested in the building department at the time? Was that the position she...
Either department. She was interested in either department. And, you know, we were, once again, we were trying to make the present employees happy that we have and work with them. And this has come to light now where this would be the perfect opportunity for this individual going into the building department and working with the new administrator we have. I don't see it failing. I can give you a report. We have talked to her today. Talked to her. Her decision is still available. She informed us she was. And once again, we have that 90-day period in place to where if we need to change something, we could. My concern, like I said, is finally getting somebody trained as a backup person under that. I don't know if you guys went through there, but all the paper tags from all the permits Shannon's going through, there's thousands of them. She's trying to get that order. She's the only one in there doing it. It goes to customer service. We wanna accomplish this task. We wanna get up to speed on the new BSNA software that we paid for, get our system running proficiently. I don't know how else to put it, but this makes total sense. And I don't see it doing anything else would change my decision. Once again, not to speak for you, but your decision and Jeanette who sat in on the interviews.
Do you still have all the, your notes and stuff from the interviews that were done? Okay, because we're having a special meeting on June 16th. We're having a meeting before that to go over the budget draft. Maybe that would just give us all a little bit of time for this to sink in. And if you pulled out your notes and gave us a quick, you know, this one, this one, and this one, we're top three. And then give us a chance to talk to Bob.
Your name is on, as a reference, so...
Just so that we're not, I understand, but, you know, Carol was leaving here today. It's just, it's just real quick to be saying, okay, now let's hire this one.
It almost doesn't look good when someone leaves and you gotta replace the next day or the same day.
Basically, Joe, you took the words out of my mouth. I was gonna suggest that we at least wait till that meeting, just to let it sink in, because you let, you know...
Whatever you prefer.
You know.
And that's what we can, to enjoy it.
Because I think it's gonna be almost like a kick in the face to Carol also. Like, you know, she isn't, her seat's not even cold and somebody sitting... And she was having a difficult time today trying to, you know, she was getting very emotional and she's got a lot of health issues, so we don't wanna push anything. But actually, the two weeks, Chris, you asked about the meeting. It's two weeks from today is when we're supposed to have our budget meeting and that. So if you want something in between times, we can set something.
We're supposed to, we're supposed to do a meeting before that to actually look at the budget before the 16th.
Correct.
You know, the clean copy, so we could actually have it on that agenda. And so then we're not waiting two weeks. We're not maybe waiting a month and a half and having that off as short-staffed.
Could be better days that way, yeah. Yeah, I wouldn't mind seeing, just, and I'm pretty comfortable with the fact that she works under you and you recommend her. But I think I would feel better if I just saw the top couple. But, you know, like I say, it's your department. I've always said, you know, whatever department that is, what they're comfortable with. But I kinda agree with that.
Do you have anything you'd like to add, Jeanette? Yeah, I mean, I appreciate ultimately it falls on my head. So that's, if I'm not doing the shot, it's gonna be a reflection on me, so...
Before we hear you, Shannon. Shannon was the first choice out of all the applicants. The applicant you have in front of you was the second choice. And then there was a third. I can pull all those out and give you all a copy of all of those.
Just the ones that you did interviews on? Because I know there were 250...
No, there wasn't.
Applications.
No. On all 10, even though we took a few out that we... Or do you want just like the top five?
We can give you every applicant that we interviewed.
No, it doesn't even have, top five is five, just so that...
Just to look at them. And, you know, we might, I don't know if we marked them that way.
I'm not sure either. These are the first two or three and then...
I don't think we're gonna have to give them everybody we interviewed. I mean, just because I don't know, do you remember if we, I don't think we rated them one at a time.
No, I don't think so.
But it was clear, I can tell you this, the top two selections, it was clear cut.
Right. And then you called her today just to see if she was available in case she had another job by now or...
Yes.
And she was. We didn't look into any timeframe. You know, you gotta give somebody at least two weeks to close up whatever they have at their house or whatever she's doing. So it would be at least two weeks before she could start. The BSNA training for the building department is not till the end of June right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
And with that said, we need to set a meeting for next week or this week to go over the budget final.
I wouldn't mind doing it then this week, but what's everybody scheduling with the reverse?
This week's tough for me. Well, first, I wanna make a motion to add, under New Business D, setting of draft budget meeting.
Support. Do I have to do it in first because we adopted the agenda originally or...
I don't, I believe they can make, but also too, are we adding the hire as part of that too?
I'm just asking. That way it's on the agenda for it. And we don't have to strike it at the end.
Would you like to amend that?
I'd like to add, under New Business D, set draft budget and hiring meeting, special meeting.
Thank you.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Ottenbacher. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. What are we looking like for dates?
Well, we don't have a copy of it. And so I'd like to be able to go over it before we actually have a meeting, so... Tomorrow?
She's gonna get a copy tomorrow. So we're seeing.
I could do Thursday if it's any evening.
Thursday this week?
Yeah. Or any day next week.
No reason I'd like to do it sooner than later. If there's anybody has issues or problems, then it can be addressed. Thursday sounds good to me if that's fine with everybody.
Thursday's fine with me.
That way it gives us enough of a... What time?
Time. Carol, are you, what's your schedule?
You think in seven?
Later the possible, yeah.
Seven o'clock?
Yeah, I can come right from there if I have to. Yeah, seven o'clock. That would be the earliest.
Make a motion that we set the draft budget slash hiring special meeting for June 5th, Thursday, June 5th at 7:00 PM.
Support.
Motion by Clerk Keith, supported by Treasurer Ottenbacher. Any other questions or discussion?
She said we will have a budget tomorrow?
Yeah, tomorrow, okay. Would you like the new hire there also at this time? Any questions?
No, just the applications is fine. Just to look at it.
All right, no problem. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Aye. Post. Motion carries. Thank you.
And just before, now you just heard us say the budget meeting is June 16th at 7:00 PM.
Okay. Public comment. Any public comment this time?
I'm just here to notify the board of an event we have scheduled for the property on 28 and Gracia. May I?
Sure. Give them to the deputy clerk, please show pass and dial, or to the chairman. Thank you.
Are you attorney? Steve's attorney. Steve, John. weekend of August. And I'll be seeking fire department approval and electrical inspection if I need one.
Same as before.
Same thing.
John, excuse me, do you have hours that are going to be open, so because people are going to call us and ask us, well, what time are they going to close?
They haven't been set yet, but as soon as I do, I will forward it to the board.
Okay.
I appreciate you supplying this, though. I was going to talk to you about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment this time? Another public comment.
Motion to adjourn at 2:42. I'm sorry, that's, for non-military, that's 8:42.
Support.
Motion by Trustee Boyd, supported by Trustee Churchy. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Meeting adjourned.[1788.51]